The executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll do the certification. Mr. Ball?
Madam Chair, I move to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and only such business matters were identified in the motion to go into executive session were heard, discussed, or considered an executive session under the grounds of 2.2-3711A, one personnel, 2.2-3711A3 accusation of real property, and 2.2-3711A7 consultation with legal counsel, and 2.2-3711A8 consultation with legal counsel in general.
Yes, and if you will note that we added, when we got in executive, we did get into some discussion on property, so therefore the record shows that we're adding A3 to our certification this evening. I'm a yes.
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 Okay, we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Yes, we're down to delegations. Would anyone like to speak before the board?
My heart's for a prayer, could we? Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be able to come to you again and that we came to come to you thankful that you hear us, that the cross bridged the gap that avenue you've made between you and them and therefore all of us. And we thank you for the board and their willingness to serve and those who'll be honored tonight. And thank you for this end of a successful school year and let the kids enjoy their summer and seniors just bless their future endeavors. We thank you and praise you for all, in Christ's name, amen.
Anyone else?
How you doing?
You too.
Thanks very much for coming today. My name's Dave Cheek. I live over on Off River Mountain Road here in Russell County. I wanted to take a couple minutes this afternoon to talk with you about something that we started back about 2018 looking at how to get from local farms into schools. Started with Kathy Hicks over in Russell, Virginia, Public School. And we kind of developed a process then of being able to bring it to that time beat, okay? Because that seemed the easiest thing to get through because it's already certified and all whoever get that, the local growers into it. And since then, worked a lot, I was working in Washington County at the time, so was familiar with the area, the kind of people a lot more. And we developed into the produce side over there for farming school. And we've been working on how to get to the logistics of that. I was fortunate enough to be asked to come sit on a panel with the USDA, Virginia Department of Education, and a lot of local schools in this region. And when I was there, it seemed like they all wanted the local food because they have a very difficult situation, understandably, so you have a budget, okay? But then you also, you have to have, meet federal guidelines for everything. But at the same time, you want to be able to put out lunches that the kids want because you get paid on the clicker. And the more kids that come to the line, the more that you get. And so, how to do that? And there are a number of people at that conference that, Tim Jesse up in Tazewell was one, or Kathy Hicks over in Russell, Virginia, and some others. And so, we really started brainstorming after that. And we reached out to a number of produce growers in the Washington County area. Also, as a facilitator, farmers market in Abington, Virginia, okay, was elected by the president. So, knew as ones were good, as ones were not good. We're able to start getting them selling into the schools, okay, get that process. Also, reached out to some of the new farms in Tazewell for that as well. I was really after the quality assurance to make sure the same meets the requirements necessary because of this. Since that time, Keith Paragon has left Russell, Virginia, he's over Washington County. And one of the farmers has really taken off doing well, and that's Scott Ramsey with Windmill Gardens there. And he recently, in working with Washington County Schools, Keith Paragon, they were looking at doing a modification of a greenhouse at Holson High School in a kind of a public-private type of partnership. To convert it to an aquaponic type house, because that's what he has more familiarity with and with food in the winter. And they're looking at providing the food to a lot of, all the Washington County schools as well from these greenhouses that are in Washington County. Different type of food source in each one of them, maybe lettuce in one, maybe another type of crop in another to go forward. And he's going to get the curriculum for the classes. Haven't seen, his wife's a teacher at Ray Valley. I haven't seen the curriculum yet. I'll get a little bit before long. And then we will, once we get that going, they'll, the food will go into the school, the money will be split, okay? He'll get some money out of his opponent. He'll provide the quality assurance with it and all the details. And guess what I'm looking at here is, Russell County is my home county, okay? We got the things going there, got some stuff going in Tazewell County, but nothing in Russell County. And I'm looking at, the reason I'm after that, I don't get anything out of this at all, zero. Okay, I'm after something that, let's see, how hard is it for a kid to get into farming? It's tough. And unless you happen to have to be a generational farm, you inherited a bunch of land, or you, you know, something happens, did a really good job someplace, you got enough money to come back and get into farming. But this provides a good stepping stone. And with that being that, if we can learn how to do the, these aquaponic type greenhouses or other types of the food, for the food, because food insecurity is a big thing. It's a big discussion now. I need a lot of demographics and numbers, you know, how much is going local, how much is not going local? What percent of the market were actually penetrated up in the Abington area? And I know it's a lot less here. But with that, I guess what I'm asking is, you can take one step for me, one step first. And is that something that will be considered here, to start thinking about that, maybe put a little team together? Let me see what facilities we have in the county. But the goal is to teach your kids where they grow to it, to learn the quality aspects. Because to sell into the schools in Virginia, you do not have to be GAAP certified, okay? But you better be really close to GAAP practices and probably get GAAP certified. That'd be part of the curriculum, how to learn how to do that, for the quality control of the product that's coming out. Then they can come out, I've talked to Robert Hilton over here at RD for USDA. They have a lot of grants available for greenhouses, a lot of grants available to help kids get into farming. And so, there's a natural stepping stone if you can do that. Because we've got this money coming into the school system, keep it local, push it down, keep it local, help the young people and have that option. And once they have cash flow there, I know the people at Farm Credit, I've camped a lot on a couple boards with them. And they, they'll be happy to loan you money as long as you're making money. Okay? So, you gotta get that foundation going, and then they can really get going with their future. And guess what I'm asking then is, you know, can we put together, think about it? I'm willing to help, bringing people together, work through the nuances of it. Start planning, see if this makes sense for Russell County, may not. I know that every school is different, every situation is different. And if you don't know, look at the details, and that's part of it. See if it makes sense here.
Hey, are you talking about maybe having a high program to help get this started, like farmers and?
That's what they're doing over there. FFA, the money from the sale over there, part of it goes to the FFA of Holson High. And they have like a horticultural department over there, and those teachers are involved in this. And they're all, you know, they flesh out this curriculum so that we give them, give them that opportunity. Because you go into any kind of high-density farming like that, you better learn the details or you'll be in trouble because you get wiped down real fast. Disease come in, something comes in, you're out of business for, I don't know, six months. And you better learn that while they're there than to get out there and have their money on the line and something happens and take them out of town.
What are they growing there? Lettuces?
Lettuces, just what we put into this one. And I'm looking at the other schools, different ones, different type products year-round like this. Whether it stays aquaponic, which has a fish in it. You know that Russell County gave a grant to have a small fish processing facility up here in the Tazewell area, not the big one going in, but a small. And I don't think it's ever been built. And so, I was asking some of the supervisors, and they were perking up, why not? And said, we're going to try to figure out why. He ran into some technical hurdles, because, with Scott, we talked to him as well, and he said, well, I didn't know who was going to regulate. Is it FISA, is it VADA, is it FPA? And he, well, we'll figure that out if someone's willing to work. And then you got, things start to come together. Without them having to go buy a big, you know, bunch of land, they get started. And they can stay here if they have to. I mean, it's not a big greenhouse. You go for the aquaponics, it's not a big greenhouse, that's why I say it's fairly intensive. I might believe it has active mentions. Scott's got some, I'd like to take some photos and go look at his operation that he has currently running. And he says, whenever, I talked to him today, and asked him if he had margin in his schedule that we wanted to do something in Russell County and spend some time here to help get it going or help with this. And he said, yeah, he did because he's going to Tazewell twice a week, you know, helping up there.
Now, you mentioned beef. Is beef something like we could do?
I think we already are, yes. We're already on that.
Yeah, are you getting that through the?
Anderson, I think, Ms. McCoy.
Anderson and his sons and Leonard Farms and a farm in the county.
You getting into PFT?
Oh, yes, yes, because Russell County belongs to all.
Right.
With Kathy.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm working with Anderson, getting them, he, I know he's did the first couple of loads over the alleys to, to someone up in With County, so was the foregone up in With County. And then trying to get that, the specs right on the feed to come to.
Well, Dave, I thank you for coming. I've talked to him a couple times. I invited him to come speak tonight because I think this is something that Russell County needs to be doing. And I'm off work. Yeah, I'm off work. We, I'd like to set up a meeting with him and see if we could put a team together and see what we could do because I think this is something we definitely need to look into.
And everyone's in twice as different.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, for coming. Have a good evening. Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Hooker, do you have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, one, we will be removing an action item, the second reading and approval of policies.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion that we approve our agenda for tonight? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're down to our minutes. Do we have a motion that we approve the minutes of May 7?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we have the minutes of May 21, the special court meeting. Do we have a motion that we approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Okay, Dr. Hooker, that takes us down to the recognitions for tonight. Yes, I would like to ask Ms. McCoy to come forward to help me with the recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Madam Chair, past chair, members of Russell County Board. We're here tonight to recognize these young artistic students that we have in this county. Our first group will be our county art contest winners and will begin with their grades pre-K through five category. And that is Ms. Andy Brown. She goes to Lebanon Elementary School. Her mom and dad are Megan and Jim Brown, and they'll come forward. And she received second place at our V S B A. The V S B A Student Art Contest, second place goes to Ms. Andy Brown. Please step outside.
Okay, can we see?
Shit for a painting, that's all pretty. Oh, they could do a beautiful job.
Wonderful.
You want to have a picture?
Ms. Long, I didn't ask if you need to say if you were, but go right ahead. Well, I figured I could say that. Isn't that your birthday too? She is an excellent student, a great little friend, and now we know a wonderful artist. So, we love having her at the new entry. Good job, dear. Congratulations. And then the art category will be grade six, Ms. Kate. And that is over there on elementary school, Ms. Schmidt. Tierney Taylor and her mom and dad are Brandy and Jason Taylor, they'll come forward. And Ms. Jennifer Eaton. The V S B A Student Art Contest Recognition Award goes to Tierney Taylor.
Would you like to say?
I'd like to say my word, I'm sorry.
I'll do it, they definitely accept time, be back and forth time to take that. So, we can art way to the left, but Tierney's an awesome student. She's a fantastic girl.
And the last category, the grade nine to twelve, the high school category. And that winner is Sophie Ray from Castlewood High School. And her dad is Randall Ray. Mr. Sparks, would they get to come tonight? I'll let y'all see this. Sophie won third place at our V S B A contest.
Well, I don't know if there's a whole lot to say when you look at it. You can see Sophie's amazing artist, she's extremely talented, she's a great student. She's just, most of the time, honestly, if you know her, you don't even know she's in the building most of the time. And the reason she's probably not standing here is she's a, she is a little shy and doesn't like recognition. And when I go down and art and I see her doing things like this and I get amazed, but I can't draw Stick Man, so when she does this, it's, it's just impressive. This is one of many that she brought in and went through to try to pick what to turn into art. But Sophie, as I said, she's just extremely talented. We're proud of her.
I'd like to see one finger out.
Okay, yes, okay. Yes, we always hang our art winners in the hallway here outside the boardroom for one year. And this time next year, we'll return those to our students and hang the winners for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Our next category are our Skills USA State Winners. As I call your name, please come forward. Seth Cotterill, mother Jennifer Foster. Stephen Alex Stiltner, mother Sharon Wright. Jared Duty, mother Amanda Duty. Scotty Smith, mother Melissa Smith. Booker Steffi, Sarah and Keith Steffi. Terrence Jones, mother Louise Holbrook. Peyton King, Jack and Tracy King. Jocelyn Grizzle, Nikki Grizzle mother. Haven Johnson, Billy and Victoria Johnson parents. I'd like to ask Mr. Rastik or any of their teachers that are here tonight to come forward. Mr. Rastik, would you like to say a few words first?
Dr. Hooker, members of the board, I'm just real thankful that you all have taken up your time here to recognize these students. It's kind of humbling to even stand here tonight and see these students and the great job that they did and their instructors in helping prepare these kids for their competitions each year. And, you know, to compete with children all over the Commonwealth here in southwest Virginia, we're kind of at a deficit to start with because of where we live. And to see them go up there and perform like this and win these first and second place, you know, awards, it's just really rewarding to see the hard work that they put into this and the instructors have put in to help them to be able to do this. Last year, we had a second place winner, excuse me, in Mr. Younger's class down in, that won the national second place and won sixth place. Booker couldn't be here tonight because he won first place again this year in Masonry. And he came in sixth last year in the national. So, he's having a ballgame tonight, so he's not, and then one of our other faculty team, he's not here tonight because their own family's on the crew. And so, I want to thank all of us.
He's not on the crew. I finally got a hold of him and I said, you better have a good reason. He said, he's in my own, and he just got off work, he's working as a tour guide and hunting and fishing.
Well, I thought that, I thought he was going on out there, but anyway, he's not able to be here tonight either. But I'm going to let these instructors too get a little bit about each one of these students and what they did.
Okay, I had Jocelyn, Grizzle, and Haven Johnson. And I also had Seth Cotterill and Alex Stiltner, they couldn't be here tonight, they're working. But I'm very proud of my students. They did a category which is called Job Demonstration. And it can be anything in their field, and that's criminal justice. So, what they chose and what they practiced and really did excellent, of course, because they got first and second, was officer survival. So, they got, they went in and they did a takedown, they did handcuffing, talked to the judges about, a little bit about what they worked and why it's important for them to be safe and go home to their families at the end of the day. So, it was very impressive. Seth's not here, he was on crutches, but he still showed up and he got second place, so I was real proud of him in job demonstration. And they've just worked really hard, all these students. And we had a great time at Virginia Beach. It's my 13th year going and I'm very honored to be a teacher at RCCTC and empower young people like this.
We have a masonry and a bricklayer in competition. We took two in the masonry and two in the bricklayer. We got first and third in both competitions. They have, it's a four-hour competition. They have to lay brick and block project, they're great among it. Neateness, ploneness, correct design, how they stay and how they use their tools. And hundreds of people will come by watching them. It's quite a, they get pretty nervous, but they've done a super job, great job. I have the best bunch of kids this year I've ever had. They really get excited about going to these competitions and showing off their skills and they've done an excellent, excellent job. Very proud.
They're hard to follow. I take a cane around sculpture. Eaton, last night, I wish Peyton was here. I wish I brought his sculpture. I meant to pick it up on the shop, but it's either go get that or fix my hair, and I went to fix my hair. Anyway. It's a great sculpture and he worked so hard on that sculpture. He went up there prepared, it's not just doing a welding sculpture. You got an interview, a notebook you have to do, it's a thousand-point process they go through. So, it's really intense, and he did qualify for the nationals, but he's not going. He's already went to work, like I said, he's in my own right now working. And so, we're really proud of him and I just want to thank you, Dr. Hooker, the board, for letting us do this kind of thing. Competition is so valuable for these kids to go out, to just see other people, their peers working, and networking with people who's in the industry. And so, we jump on a bus, listen, these guys from our following, they're so organized and doing this on these trips, and I'm the one like, what are we going to eat tonight? Let's go to the, whatever. Anyway, I want to thank Mr. Rastik and Mr. Mullins, he's over all the time over there. What we need, what we need, what you need. So, anyway, I want to thank those guys, Peyton, everybody here for good. But anyway, he did a great job, really proud of him. All my kids, I just got a bunch of kids, ones competing, ones don't, they all helped each other.
Jared Duke.
His first place in bricklayer.
Peyton King, in recognition of winning first place Skills USA welding sculpture.
Thank you.
Booker Steffi, in, yes, in recognition of winning first place Skills USA masonry. Jocelyn Grizzle, in recognition of winning first place Skills USA job demonstration, a criminal justice. Haven Johnson, in recognition of winning first place Skills USA job demonstration, a criminal justice. Seth Cotterill, okay, he's not here. Okay, second place Skills USA job demonstration, open criminal justice. Alex Stiltner, okay, second place Skills USA job demonstration, open criminal justice. Scotty Smith. Scotty Smith, in recognition of winning third place Skills USA bricklayer. Terrence Jones.
Terrence Jones, in recognition of winning third place Skills USA Masonry.
Our next recognition is Teacher of the Month, Ray, and that goes to Jamie Shelton. He's math teacher at Sword Creek Elementary. Just go forward. And Dr. Steffi Eaton. I'm gonna read the nomination letter for you, Mr. Shelton. It's really great. At first glance, Jamie Shelton may seem like he would be the perfect teacher to serve as a disciplinarian. Big guy, shaved head, full sleeve, deep voice. However, that simply is not in his central nature. Students have often referred to him as Mr. Shelley. He chooses to reach his students on a much deeper and interpersonal level. He develops rapport with them. He communicates. He fosters close personal relationships. He instills a desire in them to please, and he does all of these things very well. I stood beside him on a school dance last week, and as we stood there serving students chips and cake together, I couldn't help but notice how the students engaged him, how he reacted with them, and how he responded to their excitement to see him there. I particularly noticed his exchange with one student in specific, a young student coming from a harsh environment who has faced a variety of struggles this year, both academically and personally. Struggles so severe that at one point they required a risk assessment due to concerns of self-harm. This same student has constantly fought to pass a math S O L, strayed to scrape to experience that sense of accomplishment, to earn the self-pride of working hard toward an academic goal such as this and completing it successfully. This year, they did. This year, for the first time in a long time, they climbed their Everest, coming from a state of considerable depression to having the utter joy of finally conquering the battle that they had now faced for many years. These are the students. These are the moments we all teach for, and all of this was made possible through the lessons, the dedication, the devotion, and the love of a big guy with a shaved head and deep voice, who's actually a big teddy bear. Mr. Shelton, so deserving of this award because aside from the students who are always going to pass, he's able to touch the lives of those students who are so desperately in need of a nurturing hand. For the students who come to school craving a strong, caring, and stable support system. The truth is, many students simply might not make it without a Mr. Shelley in the building. He's a teacher that catches the ones who follow. He picks them up, dusts them off, and shows them the real, the other road. He guides them on their journey. They are better. We are better because of him.
Everything there is 100% accurate. Really want to thank the Russell County Schools for having these types of awards. You know, in the last two years, I think we've had 13 people come through and nobody that, everybody done that and has got this award. And that's through a collaborative approach. And back at the school, we make a big deal out of it. When we announce it, the whole school erupts, the kids go nuts. They, that's a testament to who these teachers and who these staff have been. And it's a great opportunity to have to recognize teachers like Jamie. You know, he's a little reserved, but I've been very fortunate to have the opportunity to develop a rapport with him over the last two years and get to know him. He's a good friend. And now we talk about getting together after, you know, the school closes and moving forward with that. The middle school is getting a good educator with Mr. Shelton. Congratulations.
This acknowledges that Jamie Shelton, Sword Creek Elementary School, has been named Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. Well, you're fortunate to have me.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Our last recognition goes towards the Russell County Employee of the Month, and that goes to Kathy Duty. She's a school nurse at Sword Creek Elementary School. I'd like to read your nomination letter. There are so many great things that I can say about Nurse Kathy, as she's known to everyone at our school. Kathy does above and beyond what she is required to do for the children in our school. She's a great role model to the staff and children. She lets her light shine by showing her compassion, caring, and loving nature to all. Kathy has been my coworker and friend for many years. She puts everyone first, never met a stranger, and has such a bubbly personality. I could go on and on about what a great person she is and deserves this nomination.
So first, Kathy is so much more than a nurse for us. She's an integral part in what we do and who we are at Sword Creek. And, you know, she's involved in pretty much everything we do at the school, and we collaborate a lot. Anything I ask her to do, it's never a no. It's always a, yeah, that'd be great, or we could do this. And that's a two-way street too, because she'll come in my office and she'll be like, so, let me ask you something. Or I got an idea for you, or whatever it is. But it's a real good working environment because of people like Nurse Kathy. Like I said, so much more than a nurse, but she's able to provide a loving, nurturing stability to those special kids that really need that guiding hand. So Nurse Kathy, thank you so much for everything over the past two years. And good, let the elementary schools give them, they're gonna be bright heads.
This acknowledges that Kathy Duty, Sword Creek Elementary School, has been named Support Staff Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker.
Thank you, Ms. Corwin. Okay, so we're had an opportunity to check the bills, and we have a motion that we approve the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
I'll stand in there.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, our resignations and retirements?
Yes, we do have a few names on our resignation and retirements to be approved tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve these? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll stand in there.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, and new personnel?
Yes, same for new personnel. We do have a few names to be approved tonight.
Have a motion that we approve? New personnel and transfers? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, down to your team.
Yes, we do have two teachers that need to be approved for their continuing contract.
You have two or three?
Two.
Two. Okay, Dr. Hooker, will you have a motion that we approve these?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you next.
Okay, we do have two action items tonight. The first one is the approval of the V H S L applications for 24, 25. The school board has paid the annual V H S L membership fees for several years. The board members have access to review these applications. The staff recommends approval to pay the V H S L membership fees for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, we'll need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Powell. We, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Okay, the second item is the approval of the conduct code for 24, 25. Each year, adjustments are made to align our student conduct code with legislative actions from the spring and new Department of Education requirements. Staff recommends approval as submitted.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for the conduct code? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
There are no information items, Madam Chair.
You don't have any updates? Okay, our sales tax? Okay, it was 403?
It's 384, 540, 32.
And the A D M, 31, 41?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just getting you down in the wrong line. Okay, the maintenance report. Does any board member have any question on the maintenance report or expenditure report? Okay, Dr. Hooker, our future agenda items?
There are none for tonight.
Okay, your future calendar items?
We do not have none for tonight.
Okay, do you want to make a mention, make a mention of your next meeting, special meeting?
Yes, we will have a special call meeting on Tuesday, June the 25th, at 4:30 P. M. to finalize bills, approve the budget, approve personnel, and approve federal program grants. And then also, our next school board meeting will be on Tuesday, July the 2nd. Of course, the executive session will begin at 5:00, and the meeting will follow at 6:30.
And you might want to mention, Dr. Hooker, that the board will make our presence 4:00 or 4:15, or 4:15 on June the 25th by the.
The primary. Would you all like to meet there about 4:00?
Is that enough time for everyone?
3:45 or 4:00?
4:30.
The meeting's at 4:30?
With about 4:00? About 4:15 or?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to make it at 4:00 probably so we can get back here for the meeting.
Okay, 4:00. So we will be going at 4:00 to the Lebanon Primary. There's a building out there that we need to, board members need to look at and assess. And then the meeting will start here at 4:30. Okay, do we have a motion that we adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I want to kind of clarify something.
Sure.
In the codes that went into executive session, the acquisition of real property, we're not thinking about buying any property. I just don't, I wanted to clarify that.
But there were property discussion.
Yeah.
Does any other board member have anything they would like to bring up tonight? Okay, we'll take a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. And do we have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett, and all in favor?